Can everyone hear me? Jason, you got good audio?
I can hear you, not very loud.
Alright, I can see all, we've got a full forum, all four board members are here. We'll go to, first of all, do we have any public comments that came in via email?
I have no public comments.
You have no public comments for today? Alright, thank you. Article one. Consider the town's operations compliance plan of the state of Maine, restarting Maine's economy plan. Beginning May one, two thousand twenty, through September thirty, two thousand twenty. Gary? We all have the copy of what you put together, your draft copy?
Yep, so what I did for you, after the governor changed her, her Maine's plan for reopening and she, it proposed a restarting Maine economy, Maine's economy plan outlines some basic, I guess, guidelines for, for the public businesses, employers and people in general. For Maine, from May through August thirty-one, and the governor's plan is, has four stages to it. What really relates to us here in our operations, I think, is what we're looking at is probably a two-stage plan for reopening that keeps us in compliance of the governor's reopening plan and, you know, the reopening plan for May, for instance, for May is that crowd sizes are limited to ten or less people. And then beginning in June through August thirty-one, there's a prohibition, prohibition on gatherings of more than fifty people. And so, you know, we see businesses and public places following these guidelines. I think as a municipality, we have, as an employer and as a, as a entity that provides services and has meetings, we have to, we're gonna have to pass some sort of guidelines that are gonna help us through. I think adopting a plan, this plan is, this proposed plan puts us in compliance of the state's plan, if you will. And so, moving on through, what I've done is basically broken our operational plan into departments, which are our departments and how we would envision we could operate in May, through May, and then from June through August, if, if things stay exactly the way they are, if the, if the governor's orders do not change. And so, how would you like me to, would you want me to read through the plan outline, so that people can hear it? And then we can just go through, go through. And then you guys can, we can discuss department by department as we work through. How would you like to move forward?
I don't know, I don't wanna get too, throw everything out all at once. If you started with, for example, the town office and we, and you could read through that, then we could discuss the town office and move on to another department. I think that might be more manageable. How about, what do you guys think?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think for, for, for public interest and those that are watching and listening, it would be, it's good that we cover most of these issues anyway, or most of these points of interest.
Okay, Gary, start with the town office.
Okay, so starting with the town office, what we're proposing is a reopening date between Monday, May eighteen and, and June one, Monday, June one. Somewhere's in that line, we can be ready by Monday, June eighteen. And I got today, Natalie provided us a list that came on the list from town clerks across the state. What their tentative reopening schedules are, and what we're seeing is a range of anything between now and June one. I don't see anything on a list of probably, a list that fits on an eight by eleven towns that proposes to open later than June one. I don't know if that's because we're not seeing those towns on there, if it's because, I don't know what their, I don't have a lot of details on their, on their proposed plans. All I have is basically a wide range of opening dates that start between today and June one. With, you know, I think the lion's share of it is probably leaning towards more the latter end of May, beginning of June. So, what we're proposing here at the town office is that we would reopen between Monday, May eighteen and Monday, June one. And our operational plan for the employees is that, employees that are, like we've operated now, employees who can work from home, we, we encourage that to continue to happen. We do have employees that have been able to take their work home and work from home. So, when practical and when possible, we encourage that. We, we propose resuming normal business hours, eight AM to four PM. We have just finished today, the Plexiglas installation on the front counters. We, we need to install hand sanitizing stations, we are short, it's hard to get hand sanitizing supplies, either the, the sanitizer itself or the dispensers are hard to get. So, we've been, I think we're gonna have to rob some of the other departments, like the rec department that's closed right now, or the fitness center, and, and until we can get those hand stations, sanitizing stations. We're going to provide hand sanitizing stations for the staff on the other side of the wall, if you will. And, and also for the clientele, we're not going to allow public behind the counters. What we're posing to do is have a place where, for instance, if, if the assessor or a code enforcement officer or myself needs to meet with somebody, a client, we'll do it in the boardroom at the, the table. And that'll be a place, a common place where we will meet. And, and then after we have our transaction completed, we'll, we'll clean up like all the other businesses, establishments do. So that way, we're not getting people behind the counters. We're going to require that the employees who are in proximity to clientele are people, where they can't maintain distances, they wear their face masks. So, at a minimum, we're going to be telling our employees that they should have their mask with them at all times. So that in the event that they cannot be six feet apart, or if they wanna wear them voluntarily, then yes, they should go ahead and wear those. But we're gonna make sure that the employees have masks with them or face coverings, if you will. The front of the town office doesn't lend itself very well to queuing up customers. It's very narrow and long, we have three stations there. We think that we can staff those three stations and keep them, was it two stations, Nat, or three? Three, we, we think that we can staff those three stations and keep those available for clients as they come in. What we're looking at is allowing customers to enter the center door of the town office and exit through the door that they would normally use now for services at the town office. And we're gonna basically set up some signage and markings to queue customers in, prevent stacking of customers either in front of the door outside or inside the door, if you will. Most of, most all of you know the layout of the front of the town office and you know, it's not the greatest for having, being able to bring in a lot of people and space them out.
Gary, the door that goes into the boardroom and towards the business part of the offices and stuff, will that door be locked?
That will be closed and off limits. And we will open the door, we plan to use the boardroom for, to meet with clients if we have to. We will unlock more.
During the business part, are you telling me that I come into the front doors of the town office? I do my business, then I, I take a right turn, exit out the door that would go outside where the stairs are that go up to the superintendent's office?
You would come in by the superintendent's office door?
You're gonna come in by there?
Yeah, and you would leave by the main door, in front of, in front of the clerk station.
Got it.
And who's, who's gonna tell, who's gonna tell the person to come in if there's already four, three people at the desk? Who's gonna tell them when somebody else can come in?
We're gonna have signs outside that are gonna basically say, if you see somebody standing in the vestibule on the inside of the, the door, that middle door, that you need to wait for that person to clear out. And once that place, that, that area becomes open, that will prompt the next person to, to come in.
So, so the one standing inside the, the, the door will have a visibility to the front counter? And when somebody leaves, they can replace them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, we've set up some, some ribbon, you know, those, those stands that have those retractable ribbons that you, you use to guide customers through. You see those in airports and all, amusement parks and things like that. We have those set up right now that will kind of direct people to how to go to the station. And I think what's gonna happen is, you know, we're gonna be directing people to.
Are you, are you gonna, are you gonna tell the public that they can come in as is, or do they need a face mask? Or to, to do what they feel is, is comfortable for them?
So, that's always the, that's always the tricky, tricky question, Dave. We have people that fully support face mask and we have people that don't agree with the face masks. And so, that's something that we're gonna have to discuss here as you guys as a board, what, what are we gonna require? I know that businesses in town, there's al, there's already been a little bit of concern with businesses and clientele. And from it's our understanding that, you know, the business has the right to have a face mask policy, if you will, much like a no shirt, no shoes, no service policy. Businesses can do that if they want. It's up to them. It's up to us if we wanna make sure, if we wanna insist on masks for people coming in or face covering. And being the hot potato topic of, of the week, face masks, I think that we're gonna have to decide for ourselves what, what are we gonna do? I think at a ver, at a very minimum, we should encourage it with signage. At a very minimum. But, you know, it could be that people don't have resources, don't have the access to masks, or they come in here and they didn't have one, and you know, they, they left their lunch hour at work and they don't have a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's, it's tough, it's tough. So.
Make it voluntary, make, encourage it, and then just make it voluntary. Don't, don't say it's a mandatory.
Lori?
It's a public building, so I don't think that it's right for us to tell anyone that they have to wear one. The only concern I can see that might happen is you, if you do have, you know, three customers standing there, that isn't six feet, if you're standing three people at the counter. And if some person standing next to me doesn't like the fact that I have one on, you might get not have, like, if I don't wear one and the person next to me gets upset about that, you might have that kind of complaint. But, it's a public building, I don't know that we can force anyone to, or that we should, I don't think we should force anyone to wear one.
I think, I think our signage is gonna, is going to be key here. And I think, you know, what we could do at a very minimum is encourage people to wear masks, but also educate the public that will be using our services in our front lobby that we're not making it mandatory. So, the decision to enter the building is gonna be their own. And yes, it can't happen that, you know, somebody's not gonna wanna wear a mask. And, and we can work, I, I guess maybe, you know, the staff, we can all work to accommodate if there's a concerned person. Somebody concerned about somebody not wearing a mask, maybe we could queue them up differently and say, okay, well, we're gonna wait for this one, this person to leave and.
Yeah, you gotta play it by ear a little bit there. And I think it's the wise thing to do to make it a recommendation rather than enforcing another rule.
Yeah. So, again, we're gonna use all the, all the markings that we can use to keep everybody distant. Lori, you know, yes, you are right, there are going to be opportunities when there are three people at the front counter that they are going to be less than six feet apart. If they're standing at the front counter, they're pretty much six feet apart. You know, if they don't, if they're right centered into their station. So, we're, we're good there. But, you know, there's gonna be some overlap as one leaves the door and, you know, for instance, the last station coming in where, towards Fort Kent, if you will. We might have to let somebody, we might have to wait and say, okay, now it's clear to come. I, I don't know, we're, we're gonna work at it and tweak it to make it work, I guess.
And, and if you know that, I mean, you, you foresee that you're gonna have to have all three of them open? You think it's gonna be that busy?
We do have periods of, where it's pretty busy, lunch hours and things like that. People get off their lunch break and they went to the town office to get things done. May, May can be a pretty busy time of the year in town offices. People wanna register the boats and their ATVs and those things they can't do online. And so, yeah, May, spring is a very busy time at the town office. So, we foresee that. You know.
I was just, I was just saying that, so you might be able to take the middle one and close that one. Just use the two outside ones for when it's not too busy.
Yeah.
And if it gets too busy, you open the middle one, I guess.
Yeah, it's true, we can adjust.
Yeah.
You know, our employees here, like, like we have been, will brought both that, practice, social distance requirements. And in a nutshell, that's what we're proposing for the town office. So, you know, comments, suggestions, so what.
Is there, is there a reason why, is there a reason why we can't open next Monday?
I, I think our Plexiglas is ready. We still need some more hand stations. I think we can get, I think we can be ready by next Monday.
Well, don't, don't, don't open if you're not ready, but if you are ready, or could be ready for next Monday, you, you make that call.
I mean, what, what would stop you here, Gary? I, I, I guess that's the question. If we're ready to go, we're ready to go.
We're, we're almost there, you know, it's just trying to stay in compliance of, of what the rules are. And, and trying to see what other towns are doing for reopening dates. And so, we're not all, I'm not saying that we're all very different in respect to when we plan on reopening, but there is a bit of a who's gonna go first and how are we gonna reopen and what's, what's reopening look like. And so, you know, I went with the middle of the road. I think we can definitely do it by May eighteen, we can probably do it next week. If, there's not much more that we need to do to be open next week.
Advertise that you're open?
Yeah, we'll put out a press release, you know, and advertise it. I mean, we can't, would be too late for deadline for advertising is, is Friday new, so any advertisement that we would put in the local paper, hard copy, wouldn't hit the paper till next Wednesday. So, we can still advertise that way. It'll be a couple of days late, but we can definitely do a press release and let people know that, and then put it on our, obviously on our website. We push it that way.
Yeah, and, and, and you're still gonna take, if there are payments or whatever, you're still gonna have the Dropbox, right?
People, that, like I was, the, the Dropbox has always been there for customers to use. So, customers who are still concerned about getting out in the public will still have the ability for online services and what we're doing now, I think. Yeah, and of course, there's also the, the online registration services as well. So, those who have, those who are concerned about still coming into the public, they still have the ability to, to do their transactions like they're doing now.
Any other question? Oh, go ahead, Lori.
You have on here something about gloves, protective gloves, and I was just curious because it seems as long as they sanitize in between customers, like why would, what's the procedure for gloves? Why is that necessary?
I just put it in there because we handle cash. And so, you know, are we, what are we gonna do between cash transactions? And so, is it best to use gloves and then throw them out, or is it best to be there, you know, without gloves and just sanitizing between the transactions? So, I think it's in there as, as something that we can decide to do. And I think the staff can do what's most comfortable for them to protect themselves and protect, you know, the customers.
You'll have to change the gloves between every customer then?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and sanitizing may be the better way to do it. You know, if, if that's the case, then, cause even, even the process of taking off gloves, you know, you can, you can do that wrong. You know, sanitizing as long as you get it on there and distribute, well, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna get it, so.
Now, you may have the sanitizing stands and stuff for the public. Do you have the sanitizers themselves, the, the liquids or the foams? Or do you have enough of that?
I, I need to find out, I need to talk to our buildings person to find out what our inventory is. We're not, we're not gonna have a lot of sanitizing stains, if you will. I think we can probably wall mount a hand sanitizing dispenser at each clerk's counter, if you will. So, when the customer comes in, they can do their thing right there, coming in and going out if they wish.
Doug, any more questions?
No, no, I think, you know, shooting for next Monday, I think is a good idea. That way, you know, if you have any hiccups, you'll probably face them here a little bit early.
David, anything else?
Yeah, I think Monday is a good time to start, next Monday, yeah.
Lori?
No, if something happens, you're not ready Monday, there's no reason you can't it will open Tuesday or Wednesday, right? It doesn't have to go to the next Monday?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with this myself, so, alright, what's your next one?
Well, before we move on to that, I just, I need to know from you guys, what, what the consensus is on masks? Are we just going to strongly encourage with signage and, and indicate to customers that there may be people in the building, clients that don't wear masks, and, and let them make their own decisions?
I think that's the proper way to go. I think you should recommend it and leave it at that.
Okay.
I agree.
Alright.
You agreeing on that also, Lori, or?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, does that help, Gary, then?
That's all I need.
Okay. We're gonna go to the next page, which is what, the recreation department?
Correct. So, the recreation department, right now, the, the grounds guys are, are back to work, you know, they're starting to take care of lawns and things like that. It's, it's spring cleaning. And so, they're out and about, they're able to do their work distant of each other, so that's not an issue. And then the management at rec department have their workstations at home, their computers at home, and they're taking care of all of their business at home. Currently, so through May, moving forward, again, if there are employees who are able to work from home, if it's practical, then we're going to encourage that. It may not be practical, but we're putting that in there. We, as far as summer programs, we've put a lot of thought into that, and there's been a lot of discussion with town managers and the rec departments have been meeting by Zoom, you know, all over the rec departments, all over the state and the county. Some direct departments are not offering summer programs this summer, and some are reluctant to make a decision right now. They're gonna take a, they're sort of taking a wait and see approach, whatever their towns are doing. The issue, the issue with summer programs is, is such that, okay, it's not an issue for May, so we may be able to, to defer a decision here for a few more weeks on summer programming. Our rec department director, I've asked him for what would be the deadline for, you need a decision, what we're, if we're gonna do rec programs or not. And he said, Sam has indicated June one. So, the issue with, with rec programs in respect to the governor's outlines for crowd size limitations and social distancing. Now, true that in Ju, in June, the crowd size limitation goes up to fifty. Our rec program had well over a hundred participants last summer. It's questionable whether or not there, there will still be that much interest in it. I, I would, I would presume that some parents would be concerned and, and might keep their kids at home this summer, who knows? But yet, again, you know, the kids have been bottled up since March and are, you know, it'd be nice for, to be able to offer something and get them outside. Where it's tough for summer programs and kids is the social distancing aspect as to whether or not we can always maintain six-foot distances between kids and, and their supervisors. and, and their supervisors, and counselors, and if you will. And so, there is a requirement that we, as an employer, provide for social distancing of our staff in, in the operations that we, we put out, the services that we put out. Can we reasonably expect that we're gonna always be able to maintain social distancing of six feet between us, kids in, in summer camp? And I think the consensus is that it's going to be hard to do. There's been a lot, a lot of discussion with town managers. We've all been leaning on each other and I know the rec departments are trying to think outside of the box as to what, what could be done. There's not a lot of clear direction right now. And it seems as though we're all sort of waiting to see what everybody else is gonna do in respect to rec programs. My concern, my concern, obviously, I, I I would hate for not to have summer programs for the kids this summer. I mean, that's awful. However, my concern is, is that, you know, if we're not able to provide for social distancing and keep the kids separate, you know, how is that gonna be received by the parents who are utilizing, you know, who are sending their kids here? Would that be a problem for them? Does it present, does it present a liability issue for us as a town? If we provide a venue for which the kids can't be separated six feet apart all the time. And, and of course, the exception to six feet is that you have to wear a mask, right? And so, by offering a rec program, we, we do it. We try hard. But it, it's tough, you know? So, I don't know if we can have, make a decision on this today. It's a very tough one for me and I know it will be for you. Whether or not we can remain in compliance of the governor's orders is questionable. Along with summer programs is the food program. I knew early on, what happens with the food program through the rec department is that we gotta put in, we gotta, we have to put our place mark in to the program. So, and we tell them how many kids we think we're gonna have at a minimum. So we can get the funding for it. And so the, we do have the place mark in for that right now, but it's not a commitment. But, you know, we had to decide, I think it was the twenty fourth of, of April, we had to decide whether or not we wanted to put in for the food program. However, you know, not having summer rec, if we don't have summer rec. And had not have, we would not need a food program. But we do know that the school has run a very successful food program and, and we're basically distributing through their busing system and deliveries. And so we did talk to the school about a decision by this port, this board pending whether or not we were going to continue the food program this summer. Because they needed to know in advance. Cause they would take, they would take it up themselves and continue their, their food program that they're doing now with, like they're doing it with Fort Kent and and, and I think Wisdom is doing it as well, Sania. I'm not sure what the delivery is going to be, if it's going to be, if they're gonna continue to do door to door, or they're gonna have drop off places. But for the time being, they needed to be put on notice that it's the potential for us not doing a food program is, is real. So that they could be ready. And so we've already had discussions with schools, lunch director and superintendent and as, and with Sam and Diane as well. Moving on, we, we need to discuss parks. We've seen, I've seen some towns close their parks downstate. That, those decisions came earlier, obviously, as spring is earlier down there. Do we keep our parks open? We'd like to think that we could. What do we do with our playground equipment? We know that the kids like to use that. And potential for crowding is, is there? Potential for, for not being able to stay six feet apart is there? What do we want to do as a municipality to for the parks? Okay? And, and like the bathrooms and the rest facilities, are we gonna open those up? Put signage and say, hey, look, per, per the, these, the governor's orders, we are recommending that if your kids are gonna be out here, stay six feet apart. No, no groups of more than ten. And at least until through May, and then after that, fifty, I don't think beyond fifty, we would have an issue, too, too much of an issue with a crowd size in parks. Birch Point Beach facilities as well. We do have some, some kid facilities there. What are we gonna do there? There's a lot of towns have been discussed, towns that have beaches, have had discussions what they're gonna do with their beaches. They're gonna be popular places for people to get out of the house, obviously. So we would think that on those sunny days, a lot of people are gonna take advantage of Birch Point Beach. We gonna be open? And if so, do we wanna have some signage there basically saying, hey, you know, we're okay with you all using the beach. However, please keep your distances from everybody else. And I think that would work. Grounds maintenance crews are back to work right now. And of course, we're asking our employees to keep their face masks with them, protective gloves. And if they coming into a situation where they're closer than six feet from somebody else, then put on your mask.
You, you missed the fitness center. You wanna talk about that?
Oh, yeah. So, thank, thanks, Don. By, by the governor's order, the fitness center cannot open up till June one. Okay, so, we don't have to really decide on the fitness center right now beyond June. Because we have a little bit of time. We're gonna have another meeting before then. Fitness center's gonna be a tough one. Right now, the way the fitness center runs, or when it usually runs, is that everybody, every user of the fitness center will clean up after themselves when they leave spray bottles there and they kind of wash this, the equipment that they've used. And it's an honor system. Again, where I don't foresee having any crowding issues there. I don't think I've ever seen fifty people in the fitness center at once. But I do foresee, you know, some concerns for sanitation, sanitizing that equipment that's adequate to, to, you know, meet the, the need, keeping everybody safe. Well, can we rely on everybody to do that perfect job of, of cleaning the, the fitness center equipment? And if we don't feel good about that, then that means we're, we're putting, we're staffing that fitness center with somebody to clean up all the time. That's a cost that we've never incurred before, right? Because we, but we've, we've relied on everybody to clean them up after themselves. So, for the most part, I think everybody would, would do their part. But we wouldn't have any way of knowing if somebody was negligent.
If you have limited programs being offered at the rec department, normally you hire staff of X amount of students to work there. You probably budgeted for that, to have those type of wages included in the rec department budget. If you're not gonna, you know, have the full rec program for the kids, there may be the possibility of one or two of the students being able to be available for certain hours of the day at the rec department, at the fitness center to make sure the sanitizing is occurring. I don't know, it's just an idea.
Clean before. Couldn't you put a sign up and say, you know, I'm not gonna go in there and rely on the person before me that they cleaned it. Couldn't you have this as a sign and say, this is at your risk. You clean your equipment before you use it, so that whoever's going in there will clean it up and make sure they're comfortable with whatever they're gonna use?
That's a good idea. Yeah.
I don't think we should not open it on the first. I mean, it's not, I don't know. You're never gonna have that many people there at one time.
But I think that's a good idea. Usually, we, we look to, to clean after we've all been using the equipment. So why not just say, you know, make a statement, say, let's clean this equipment before you use it. So, so you know, you're protecting yourself.
Yeah, I would mean, feel more comfortable that way, that you clean your own before you get on and that way you know it's clean.
Yeah, good point.
I also have some seniors that have approached me today and they're very anxious to get into the gym. Are you saying, Gary, that we can only open at the beginning of next month? Per the governor's.
Good, good change.
We open the multi for walkers
Although people are walking down the street right now. We see them on the street all the time, walking.
I would make one suggestion that the, at Dion Park, that the water fountain that's there not be opened. Simply because it's open, the faucets are open, you're putting them out to draw the water. I would assume that we don't want the people just one after the other trying to drink out of that fountain at the same time.
In respect to parks and playground equipment, what, what are your thoughts as to, you know, keeping those open? Are, are any restrictions on that? Putting signage? What are your, what are your thoughts?
I don't, I don't, I don't, I guess to me, the words open and close don't fit. I think that it's there. It's wide open. If you put signs, this is at your own risk. Cause if we try to say the park is closed, who's gonna police that and who's gonna, and you're gonna get ten calls, oh my God, there's kids there playing and my child went and there was, you know, I don't know. Maybe you just put signs and ask people to be respectful of each other and see what happens and cause, you know, there's, there's people there now. I mean, we're saying, open. I walk by and, and people are using them, so.
Being used now for sure.
I, I think that I would be more inclined to be open on the parks, but having signage there that people try to maintain the, the distances and whatnot, but it is sort of enter at your own risk. There's no way for us to sanitize the playground equipment. That's more where my concern was, you know, like how about the playground equipment and proximity there and, and kids using it and what, what's our, what's the expectation? Cause there's gonna be, there's a wide array of, of opinions on that. And I think it's worthy of having them discussed here. Then that's why I wanted to put it before this board. Yeah, I, I'd like to see the parks open for the kids. Please to go and walk around and, and at least at the very minimum, have some signage there to encourage people to be mindful, to stay, keep their distances from everybody else while the government orders are up.
You've got, you've got the month of May to prepare your signage. You're gonna have a local contractor that does signs, make it for you?
Yeah, I mean, I've already talked to the rec department and I've let them know that we're gonna probably be putting up some signage at like the beach and our parks. It's educational and I also have some signs to put out here by the town office for the queuing area. So, we're gonna, we're gonna go to a local sign person with a list of signs that we wanna have made. Soon. And get those done.
Gary, does that, does that, is that enough to protect the town against any kind of liability, you think?
So I, I actually have a question into the insurance company this morning. And our local agent has reached out to their underwriters. They haven't gotten back to them yet. So, I'm just waiting on that. And I can keep you guys apprised of, of what I learned.
Yeah, that would be good. You get till June, June first to formally say that we're open or not. I would tend that, tend to agree that we, we wanna keep those parks open if we can.
Gary, you know, with, with a lack of summer programs there, I mean, what does that do to, to the employment of some of our summer employees over there?
Well, so right now, we have four full-time staff at the rec department. We have the director and, and then Diane, who, you know, was taking care of the food program and, and a lot of the, the programs, if you will, crafts and a lot of different things. You know, we wouldn't have to hire summer help, obviously. And the other two are primarily grounds people who help out as needed with, with programs for heavy lifting and things like that. And so, I know that, you know, you know, I've talked to Sam at the rec department as to whether or not they can become creative enough to maybe come up with some programming activities, interactive through Zoom or something that they could put out there. This is why I asked him for a deadline. What, what would the board be, what would it be, the latest date that we could push off a decision on, on summer rec? Indicated June one. And that's primarily because we have to secure staff to work this summer. So, it's tough. I mean, you know, school's out, you know, school's closed and then the kids, there's no expectation of these kids going back to school, but then, you know, we're gonna have a rec program and the kids are gonna be in the classroom kind of setting outside, if you will, or indoors sometimes and you know, it's a matter of opinion, whether, whether you think it's a good idea or a bad idea, but, you know, as far as we're concerned here, I think we need to be in compliance as best we can and, and we should have a we should, our consideration should be what's best for the community and the children, you know?
You know, when, when you consider the summer programs there, the, the actual kids programs, I mean, it, it, it's, it's almost impossible to try to police kids that are having fun and playing and running and doing what they do and to try to, to keep their distance. You know, it's, it's just, I, I just don't see how you could do it. Unfortunately, I mean, if there are other, other activities that, that can be created, I'm sure that there are some folks that are thinking about certain activities for kids right now that do allow distance, but, but anyway, I mean, I, I haven't seen any yet and I, I, I fear that we're not gonna be able to run too many programs here this summer for these kids.
Tell them to get some pedal bikes.
Yeah, great idea. Great idea, Dave. That's, that's a perfect, perfect, perfect activity for kids.
So, in respect to the rec department, do you want to make a decision on programs today? Or do you wanna wait a couple more weeks on this? What's your, what's your feeling?
Well, I think we should wait, we should wait a little bit more.
I mean, nothing's pressing us here, is, is there, Gary, that we, we need to decide on this tonight?
No, but people are starting to ask questions. Is there gonna be rec? And everybody, we're, we're all sort of, you know, we all wanna have things in our, in, in their place, you know, our plans in place. And so not knowing, not being able to make decisions and, and on things that used to be fairly simple is frustrating. And so for the sake of, for the sake of the parents, I don't wanna put off a decision too late either. I think Sam can push it off till, till June. Programs don't start till, till late June anyway, after school is normally out. And so, yeah, we could, we could definitely wait a little bit on this one.
I think the decision lies more with whether or not we could come up with activities to find a way to honor the whole social distancing. Like, as a parent, I mean, a lot of people may think I, I'm crazy and wrong. I don't think it would stress me out too much to have my kids go to rec, but most would, I think, from what I'm hearing. So, what if we like said to the parents, like, send us emails, let us know, like, what kind of programs you think we could do? Maybe we could find some way to do some kind of treasure hunt with, you know, the kids doing it separately on their own with their family. I don't know if we can have a traditional rec like we always did, because it's just not, it's, you're not gonna be able to keep those kids apart, like you said. There's no way you're gonna keep them distanced. But to say we're not gonna have rec at all, I think really we need to find out if we can come up with some great ideas and programs first and probably, you know, half of the people listening have ideas, so. I don't, I don't know. We should decide yes or no tonight.
No, I think we should either. I think we wanted to wait, but I think your, your points are good, Lori, because I'm going off my experiences with my daughter living in Fredericton and what they're doing there. They're more open now in, in, in Yubon's Way than they are up here in Maine. But their, their programs that they have are already moving along where they encourage, like what Dave said, you know, family bike things during the rec periods, treasure hunts for certain things, walking through, taking a hike and trying to find a frog, trying to find a bird, try to find this and that. You know, there are activities that can, that can really work well with the groups like that. But they also depend a lot on the family being involved together. Not just the kids on their own, being, being sent to the rec on their own. So, I don't know.
So why don't we send, why don't we send Sam out on a search? See what he can come up with for activities that we might be able to, to accept and say that that's something worthwhile or not, and, and then we can kind of decide if we're gonna, if we're gonna run some kind of program.
Right. Plus, at the same time, it'll give our insurance, people come back, be able to come back to us and tell us what they feel our liabilities are, our exposures are.
Yep, and I think Lori's idea, I mean, I don't know where we would channel those, those emails, but I think, you know, parents today are very well aware of, of, of what they're facing for the summer, so they're looking also, and they might have some great thoughts and ideas for us.
It sounds like we're all on the same page to, 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 to do the research and come back and report a later date as to what can and what we should not do for the rec department. Yes.
Couple of other, couple of other things I just want to make sure I understand. I, I get it on, on all that, and I think that's a good plan. Bathroom facilities at the parks open? Will they open? Or if, if we are, then we're.
Oh, I wouldn't open them, Gary.
No.
Not now.
Because if we do, we're, we're gonna have to, that'll have to be some level of sanitation that we're gonna have to provide there. It's complicated, you know, it's, it touches everything.
So I'm, I'm going backwards a little bit, you know, because I said I, I don't like this whole open, because then you have to police it, but you know, if you're worried about insurance and I like to kind of listen to what everyone else says, why don't we just say that the parts are closed? If you use the park, it's at your own risk, then it's closed, we're covered. But we're certainly not going to send the police after kids in the playground, right? Maybe that's really all we need to do.
Why, why do you want to go that way instead of just telling him that the parks are open, but use them at your own risk as opposed to, to closing them and letting them use?
It's just a thought, Doug, because, you know, maybe the word closed, if you guys are worried about insurance, covers us, the town. You know, I'm, I'm okay either way. I wanna, I want people to be free to use it if they so choose. I don't want to start parenting other people's kids. But you're right, I didn't really think about the liability to the town, so, which is, really should have been my first thought.
Well, if you say at your own risk, that's exactly what it means, at your own risk.
Right.
Anything else, Gary, on the rec department?
No, the only other thing I'll add is that the campground at the boat landing on the river, by, by law, just like the fitness center, has to remain closed until June. Not the boat landing, but the campground. So the boat landing is going to be open, but the campground has to be closed till June 1st. And again, we're probably just gonna leave those bathroom facilities closed for the time being.
Yeah, I agree. Let's move on.
We're all on the same page on that.
Okay.
Really quick, have you heard, I don't know if this is just a thing or if there really is something out there, has there been discussion with you guys or MMA and that they're thinking about changing those types of restrictions because campgrounds in Southern Maine are much different than campgrounds here?
I haven't heard anything yet.
Haven't heard and no emails from MMA or anything like that.
I have not, I have not, and quite, I think, right now, the, all of the rules implemented under this order are pretty much evenly applied north to south, east to west. All right.
Even in the other Maine.
Even in the other Maine. Public Works Department.
So Public Works is, they are already back to full-time work. They, when we, back in March, when it's all hit, we put everybody on split shifts and alternating so that we could try to, and of course, with the exception of a snowstorm, everybody was working in the garage pretty much and in close proximity, so we got, we had everybody split up that way. But we started, you know, getting more back to work and last week, everybody was pretty much back to work. What we're doing at Public Works is resuming our 40-hour work week. We're telling our employees that they should have their face masks with them, and if you're in contact in close proximity to employees or, or anybody else, that they, that they wear their masks, practice their social distancing requirements. We've basically implemented to the extent that we can, vehicle assignments, equipment assignments, so you know, you don't have to really sanitize the equipment between employees, if you will. High-risk employees, anybody who has any underlying health conditions are, there are times when our Public Works Department do have to work in the sewer department, if you will. If there's a blockage somewhere, they're the ones that go out there and work to get that resolved with contractor. So what we're telling high-risk employees is that if they are going to be in contact with sewage, that day, they dawn, full PPE, gloves, masks, gowns and face shields when in proximity to, or handling sewage.
Is that available?
I think we can get some resources through our hazmat resort, department. I think there's some gowns there and that we can use, so.
Have you, have you identified any high-risk employees?
Don't know that we necessarily have some in the Public Works Department, but we do have others, like in pollution control, if you will.
I think, I think, I think what Dave maybe, you know, the high-risk employees might be those that are exposed to the sewer parts and stuff, where they go on a job that could be a high risk.
I don't understand why the sewer is a high risk. Are we saying that the virus is following the sewer?
Yes.
Is that what we're saying?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, in fact, they're talking now, I mean, we're not talking, but there's discussions that testing sewage for coronavirus, is it, is it going to be a good way to test for hotspots in the future? The presence of the, of the virus is going to be in the untreated sewage, so we know that it's there. And they, you know, by default, anybody that works in the sewer department is extra careful because there are other pathogens like hepatitis, E. coli, that they have to be mindful for, so this is not, this is normal for them. I think it's just that it's even more contagious if, if it were there. And we just need to be aware of that. We want employees to be protected when they're going to be doing that kind of work.
Okay. I think that's, sounds like a good plan for the Public Works right now, Gary.
Okay. Pollution control. They have always, they have not gone to reduce work schedule. They are considered absolutely essential. And so they, they were always on the 40-hour work week, so we're gonna continue that. Employees, you know, again, if they're going to be in proximity to other people, they need to wear their masks. High-risk employees, just like Public Works, we're gonna require them to wear all the protections available to them. Practice social distancing. We're not allowing any people into the, any public into the pollution control facilities. And again, vehicle, vehicle and equipment assignments whenever possible.
The, the, one of the comments is that there are still construction crews working at the pollution control. Do they have to follow the same guidelines with gloves and masks and?
Yes.
That's been established and, and talked about?
Yep. Police Department?
Pollution?
Sorry.
Pollution control, we're all set there.
So how, we're talking about instituting all these precautions here. Are we revisiting this in 30 days? Is that the idea?
I think we revisit as necessary and as, as the governor's orders change, we will have to revisit. Right now, this is our, this is our guide. I think in the absence of any guidance, our employees are asking questions and so, and people as well, and so I think this is gonna be something. I think these are reasonable, you know, measures that we can easily do.
Well, we're not talking about doing this for six months here. We're doing this for a month and then we'll revisit and see what changed, if anything changed, if nothing changed, we resume for another 30 days and then do this 30 days at a time, not just a blanket. We gotta do this for half a year.
No, I mean, right now, I put, I put the outline for there, for your consideration, that if the, the governor's orders don't change till through September, excuse me, through August 21, then this is sort of what we have to, you know, consider that we're going to do here.
21 or 31?
August 31.
Okay. How's that, Dave?
Yep.
Police Department, they've, they've been on a 40-hour work week all along. Again, we're gonna ask them to cover their masks, cover their faces when we're in close proximity to other people or employees. Social distancing, we're not allowing the public into the police department offices, if you will. And the vehicle assignments, whenever possible, and they have been implementing that, I think, and you know, they, the way that they use their cars, they sanitize them after their shifts and you leave them, they leave them alone for a shift, if you will, and the other officer that's replacing uses the other one, so that seems, that seems to be working pretty well.
Yeah, out of curiosity, you say employees must cover face with mask and have protective gloves. The type of work that they kind of have, does that mean if they do a traffic stop, as an example, that when they go up to the vehicle, they will be wearing their masks and their, their gloves? Or is that? How's that gonna work?
I think, I think the guidance is that if they're gonna be six feet or less, then we should probably be using some sort of protective covering. And, and again, not everybody agrees with that, but those are the policies that are there. You know, coming from the governor's office down to us.
Well, your department heads here, Gary, are, are getting these mandates the same way that we are right now. Is that right?
They have, they've seen this outline. I, I shared it with them when I shared it with, with you guys last week with the, with the agenda pack being distributed. So.
Any feedback from them?
No, I mean, you know, there's, the whole mask thing is, is, we all know that's going to be a, a bit of a pain for us, but you know, it's, it is what it is. I think it's not necessarily about, it's not necessarily about becoming infected. It's if, you know, it's yourself too. It goes both ways. And there's always, there's discussion about them masks or covering being 100% effective or not, if they actually do any good, but right now, that's all we have to go with. So.
Okay.
Ambulance department, pretty much the same guidance that I just listed with the, as the police department, but you'll notice that I, I've, I've listed here that the ambulance department has their own guidance, if you will, doing what they do. So what I have listed here for them, just like the police department, is at a minimum, they probably have protocols in place much more stringent than that. So this is, these, these require, these these guides here are not meant to supersede what they already have in place. If they have something that's working, that's fine.
Okay. Any questions? Keep going.
Fire department, same, same as the ambulance department. You want me to read through them? I wish.
No, it's pretty much the same thing.
Yep. Public library, you know, discussion on that. Remain closed. It may possible reopen in June. Staff can work from home as necessary. Employees must cover with mask and protective gloves, practice, practice social distancing. So the, the library has their own board, if you will. And so we're gonna have to lean on them as well, or we're gonna have to work with them to see what their thoughts are and what, what are you gonna do with the, with the library? A lot of people come in, there's books being handled, computers being shared. What are the protocols gonna be for sanitizing and that? So I put that in here as for discussion for the libraries, more of a place mark. None of that is set in stone, because I think we need to discuss with the public library board what their intentions are. They are a department of the town, but they have their own governance.
Got it. Any questions on this?
Nope.
Okay, move on.
Next thing is not necessarily a department. It's basically what I've listed as town-sponsored events and activities, or any event or activity on town properties. You'll see that I, I listed there in bullets, May outdoor events on town property, by rule, has to be limited to less than 10 people. Or 10 people or less. Events in excess of 10 people are prohibited by state's emergency rule. And then from June 1st through October 31st, outdoor events on town property that are either, again, town-sponsored or on, events on town property are, are gonna be limited to the 50-person or less rule. So examples of that would be the parades, music festivals, music events. And that's a pretty consequential one, because that means Acadian Festival, Music in the Park, you know, Rhythm and Roots, or any other outdoor activity in the summer months. We've already seen parades being canceled, the Potato Blossom is canceled, the Clam Festival down east, down on the coast is canceled. You know, there's, a lot of these have already been done. I, I hate it, but these are events that do bring people into a crowd. And so, you know, that, I, I felt that was a very consequential thing to bring up here tonight. But these, these are the rules that have been given to us that we have to consider and put before, and they're put before you guys, so what are we gonna do in respect to compliance of 10 and, 10 and 50, May and June?
How, how is this, you know, we, we went through over the recreation and the parks and stuff a while ago and, you know, now you're talking any activity on town property. The parks belong to the town. And we're saying here through May, less than 10 people. And, and June, be 50. Is, is there a little bit of a controversy there or a?
In respect to people using the parks?
Yeah.
And, and activity at the parks?
Yeah.
You know, the whole thing going back to, to the parks is crowd sizes are limited to 10, right? And so define the crowd. What, is it in a certain space? There's nothing that tells us where that space is, outside, if you will. And so, are, anything that I've seen. And so conceivably, you know, a group of parents and kids could go to the park and, and you know, if told with signage saying, hey, listen, enter at your own risk, please maintain your distances. As per, then they, they have the choice to do that. With programming, with, with, with big venues like that, it's gonna be hard to have any way to distance these people six feet apart. And then you're gonna be definitely in violation of those, those limits. So I know that I've talked to Jane, been talking to Jane Carter about this. She reached out to me and we've talked a few times. She, she's the one that handles Music in the Park on Thursday nights and Rhythm and Roots Festival, the Bluegrass Festival. And so she's already thinking of different ways to be able to bring the venue to people's doorsteps. Sort of a mobile, mobile thing, maybe. I don't want to let the cat out of the bag and just, I know she's thinking outside the box to try to bring something to the people in the community. So I think there's gonna be something. We would support that. But I don't know a way to get around these restrictions without being in clear violation of them.
Okay.
You know, the, the one, just thinking about some of these activities here, the one that concerns me the most that we're gonna lose control of is probably Birch Point here in the summertime when, when we start opening it up and, and people just start coming. I mean, who's gonna be counting heads and who's gonna say we're at 50 or, or, or less or more? I mean, nobody's gonna be keeping an eye on that, I'm sure. So, so, I mean, there could be some, some ramifications there, but, but in any case, that's the one place that I could see that we could face some issues here this summer.
And it may very well be that we might want to send somebody down to the beach to kind of walk around and encourage people to keep their distances. And it may very well be that we might wanna send somebody down to the beach to kind of walk around and encourage people to keep their distances. You know, it can fit a lot of people on the beach. But, you know, can, will there be more than fifty people there at a given time, could, it could happen on a nice day, especially this year. After everybody's been, been bottled up.
You're gonna, you're gonna have some signing at the beach, signi- signage? That, that specifies that fifty or less, six feet apart, that kind of thing?
Yeah, that's tough, you know, because even the, even the fifty limit person rule. It's tough, because, you know, it becomes a first come, first served type of thing, and all of a sudden, you know, who's counting fifty one and fifty two and fifty three and.
Voluntary, voluntary listening to all these rules and then. The other, the other part is once in a while, you might have a policeman take a ride around just to spot check once in a while. It, at least it covers the town by giving the public the right information. To keep their distance and to not be more than fifty on the beach. It covers you and, and the town. More than that. There's not much you can do. What they did down in Florida, they opened the beach and they told them to stay apart and, yeah, do, do they always do it? No. But do they do it most of the time? Yes, and do you look the other way once in a while? I guess so. You know, and people that are comfortable go, people that are not comfortable stay home.
Yeah, they did that in California when they opened up, and then it didn't work, and they had to close it back down again.
Okay.
Okay, need any more direct, any more direct input from us right now for that, Gary, or you're all set?
Well, I guess, you know, I, I feel like I need to hear, I would need for this board to have. Some sort of opinion as to, are, are we gonna abide on, on the venues? Are we going to abide by ten and, the ten and five fifty rule? For May and then June through August, because, you know, we have to have a discussion here with the Acadian Festival Committee. They're waiting to have a discussion on, on, you know, conceivably, we're, we're, we're not gonna do the. The parade is the Acadian Festival this summer, you know, I just, I don't see how we can do it. But, you know, we have to have, I think, some sort of policy in place.
The Acadian Festival, unless, unless they can come at us and say. We can hold this event, that event, and that event, and keep crowds under fifty or keep people separated. If they have some suggestions, it would be up to them to provide them at this time.
No, I mean, we, listen, we've already talked about that, it, it's tough, I mean, we had bouncy houses for kids, you know, at the, at the. A lot of these things bring people close together, pretty much all activities bring people close together, and so. It's gonna, there's really no way. That we can do that. Without, without. Being out of compliance. So.
I don't think that. Plan them. I think we pretty much, I mean, the Northern Maine Fair has even canceled, so I'm pretty sure people are gonna understand. Of course, there's some that don't agree with all of this, that will be upset, but, I mean, as a community, if we go and plan the Acadian Festival. And then, different, if you're a private business owner, you wanna open, take the chance, the state's gonna take your license, that's one thing. But if you wanna take the chance, you know, Doug brought up liability, well, here's a big one, if we go ahead and try to plan events. And then all of a sudden, the governor shuts us down and says, you're not getting any money from us, you know, like. We really, I think we just have to make the decision not to have them and hope that maybe come, you know, toward middle of summer. If we see fall opening up, maybe we can create a fall fest or, you know, some kind of celebration extra at Christmas. Doesn't mean we can't do anything, but right now, I think we would have to just agree to cancel them. And see what happens from there.
Same page as you, Laurie, on that, I think you're right, let's, let's follow what we need to follow, cancel. What normally would happen in the summer and reevaluate that there after August thirty first.
The other thing too, that in respect to the Acadian Festival is that, you know, there was a lot of sponsors that put into that. And they're not gonna have, a lot of our sponsors are not gonna have the means to be able to sponsor like they used to, and they've been, they've been shut down for a period of time. And so the resources are gonna be thin, and commitments need to be made for the Acadian Festival now, we're already behind the ball now, but. Still whether or not we can do that, and so, you know, we could, we could put a lot of resources behind the Acadian Festival. And not pull in a lot of people, and then, you know, become some, something of a significant expense to us too, so it's tough.
No, I agree, I agree with Laurie there, we should maybe postpone this until the end of August. And then reevaluate, you know, things might change around here quickly. If we want to do something in September or October, we could plan it then. Doug?
I, I agree, I agree a hundred percent, I mean, you know, unless we get different direction. Date or the governor, which could happen, I mean, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of. Push-pull right now with this issue, it's a big issue for a lot of companies, a lot of towns, and, and so we could see things change, but. But, you know, in order to plan these events, I mean, it takes time, you're not gonna do that overnight, and I think our best directive for these. These event organizers is, is just to say, no, we just, we just can't have these events this year.
Yeah. All right, Gary, you got it, enough info?
Okay. Next, next topic is Board of Selecting Meeting Options, so I've listed for you. What the options are, and then I can expand on that a little bit. For May, because of our crowd size limitation, we would continue to our meetings via Zoom. W, of course, recorded by UWL and live stream to Facebook. Public input via comments and writing, the received in advance of meetings and read out loud by this board. And then from June through August, and of course, this is, this can change at any time, if the, the restrictions are lifted, we can adjust. But it's sort of a, a discussion point, if you, if you will, at this point in time, board meetings in person in June. Close to the public due to the limited space that we have here and the six foot social distancing rule, so we already have. Four board members, recording secretary, camera person, that, that only allows us a couple more people in the room. Who are we gonna say that we can, we're gonna allow in here or not? Before I, I'm done with that, I'll, I'll, I'll expand. And again, also, we, we do the Zoom broadcast on WWL, live stream to Facebook. Public input via comments written in writing, in advanced meetings and read out loud. I did reach out to the school today to see if they would allow us use of the library, we wanted to have board meetings there. School has been shut down to the public, so I didn't want to overreach. I did reach out to see if the library would be a space that we could hold our board meetings, and we could. We could potentially have our meetings there, space out the chairs, keep everybody distant. I don't know that we've ever seen a board meeting with more than fifty people or more, so conceivably, we, we could probably be all set that way.
And what did they say?
Yeah, they, they said that we can use the library, we just need to work with them in coordinating. Cause they have to bring in their custodial staff and, and whatnot, so.
Okay.
That.
The other thing, I saw, I saw the agenda for the next. In two days, I believe there's a, a school committee meeting, I'm not sure it's valid unified or whatever, but. They do allow the public to use Zoom also, so they, they can be. Like the board members on a Zoom thing where if they wanna ask questions or something, they're able to do that, is that an option for us too here?
I think it could be, I don't know if you can have them all in the room, I think, but you can. Where people could write their comments and you'll see the comments come up. Something we can explore.
I would like to see more public input, live public input. I think you can do it electronically, you could probably limit it to. Like we usually do with our board meetings, we allow ten minutes, people asking questions, so on and so forth, and then we continue with our meeting. I think it can be done easily enough using some kind of Facebook. Application or whatever. Or even.
But if you, if you could check out what they did, like, cause they advertised it that, and they gave you the location, the address to go to. They wanted to be part of this live. So I, 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 I don't know, I don't know how that works, I mean, this is great, what I'm, I'm doing here tonight, you know, and stuff, what we've done for a few meetings now. You know, this has been intriguing for me to learn, but no way savvy enough to understand what goes on.
I think, I think Jason Boucher right now, who's live streaming this, I think he has the capability of having. A live comments coming on to his screen. Okay? And.
But what I understood, Dave, what I understood, Dave, is that you can actually, they can dial into a certain address. And they can, during a period of public participation, if you were in, in, you know, at your house and. You dialed into that particular address, like, you would be like this, yeah, my name is Dave Moore. And I have a comment or a question or something, which would be, be live, so I'd like to, to see what those options are.
I just wanna say that we have to be careful too, because a lot of the Zoom platform was being Zoom bombed by people. Using it for the wrong reasons and putting up inappropriate content or pictures, and so, when you, when you, when you put the invitation out there, you create it open. Or you basically give everybody invitation, you're allowing a lot, a lot of people in there, and you're not sure what you're gonna get.
Well, one, one person would be reading the questions, and if it's not appropriate, or if it's vulgar. You don't need to read it, you skip to the next one.
Well, you know, Dave, I think what, what you're talking about and what Dawn's talking about are not the same thing here. You know, you're, you're, Dawn's talking about having them live, like, like you and I are live right now.
Yeah.
You know, where they could jump in, where, where, yeah, this I could see could be a concern, but if it's gonna come in to.
By text.
What's that?
It would come in by text, not by.
Right, so, so somebody would have to read it back to us.
Exactly.
That's a different format, and, and I, I probably would be more inclined to go in that direction than just. Open this up to everybody to.
Absolutely, yeah. Cause we do it all the time now, when you wanna watch a service right now, you can have all the comments come in underneath. While the service is going on, you see such and such as watching, and they, they, they give a compliment. Or they, they make a comment or whatever, whatever, and you can accumulate maybe ten of these questions. And then somebody can just read them, and we can answer them on Zoom, and there you have your public participation.
Yeah. Yeah.
My question too, while we're looking into all the options, I personally like the library option. Having, allowing people actually come in. And, and I, I don't know what the sound would be or how anything would work, but, I mean, we have a multi-purpose building that. Is gonna be basically empty and unused, you can, you can fit fifty people in there six feet apart. So, we just might wanna throw, think about that a little bit.
Yeah, and this would probably start in June when the fifty rule comes into play?
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree too, I agree that, you know, we need to, we need to, we need to accept the public's comments, and we need to hear them, and. I'm sure people would be for, a little more comfortable sometimes just addressing us directly than, than through Zoom.
So are you saying that in, next month in June, we could re, continue with our budgets? Try to finalize our budgets a little bit, or what?
I think that once we get into the next topic, which is the last part of this outline, we can talk about that.
Okay, let's go to it.
Town, so town meetings, annual town meetings and elections, and so here, here's the thing. Right now, our budget process is pretty much stalled. And we don't know what, what state revenue is going to be. And we're not gonna know that for, for some time now, and so we can make assumptions. We can work on a budget making assumptions of revenue. But those are just assumptions, and so. It's tough, you know, in, in the sense that we use revenues from excise tax in the state of Maine, revenue sharing. Exemptions for programs that are funded to reimburse us for the homestead and the business equipment exemption program. And are, are all, are all those programs going to be, continue to be funded the way they have it? And so, you know, we don't know, the legislature's not in session, I don't know when they're gonna go in session. We don't have a lot of indication as to what revenue, what the revenue picture's gonna look like, and why, why does that matter? It matters because if we're going to see a significant reduction in spending, excuse me, in revenues. If we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna, what we can do here to reduce expenses, to mitigate. The loss of revenue, because that's going to result in a mill rate increase. And so. If we make, if we make, in the absence of information from the state of Maine. We have to make some pretty significant assumptions for revenue, because obviously we can't assume, we can't be too. Conservative and hope for the best, and if we're short on revenue because our assumptions were wrong, and we didn't assume enough cuts. In, in revenue, what we were going to get, then that's a problem, it's a problem to our fund balance. The flip side is that if we make some very, very severe assumptions to revenue. That, you know, the sky's falling, for instance, and literally say, you know, I wish they're not, so, we're gonna assume the absolute worst, and. Well, that's okay. But that has the effect of driving up the mill rate too, okay, so. Waiting for a revenue number, you know, what we're, what we're as town managers, we, we, we speak weekly on different conferences and stuff, and MMA. And they're telling us to try to put off. Committing taxes as late as possible, as late as you can afford to, because we, we don't know. So, while I hate to, you know, make assumptions on revenue. The prudent thing would be to say, it's gonna be really, really bad. The less revenue that we budget into our, into our talent operations, that has the effect of bringing up the mill rate. And conversely, if we don't assume enough drop of, drop in revenue, that has the effect of. Not raising the real, the mill rate. However, it does put us at risk of not raising enough money at come the end of the year. If we don't get the revenues that we anticipated getting, and it's our.
So, so, so what, so what you're really saying, Gary, is that you're not comfortable. Moving forward until you know your revenue sharing number, is that what you're saying?
Well, so, let, let me continue, I'm going there, Dave, let me continue to go on here, is to say that. You know, because the annual town meeting right now under the crowd restrictions, we can't have annual town meeting till after August thirty one. Okay, and so, that's widely accepted right now, we're waiting for the governor to, to, to address this. Issue for us, but right now, it's widely interpreted that, and, and, accepted that. There's no town meeting until Au- until after August thirty one, until that fifty person limit is, is lifted. And so, you know, that gives us the opportunity to, to push back, or to delay budgets, if you will. And why would we wanna do that right now? Well, again. We're absent some revenue information, and how, excuse me. It may very well be that the revenue picture's going to be so bad, it's going to cause us to have some very, very. Hard decisions in respect to our departments, but is that a conversation that we need to have right now? If we don't need to have it, since we don't have, since we can't have town meeting till August thirty one. And so, at this point in time, we, we have made our first pass at the budget. And we were gonna start working from there and tweaking and working with the finance committee, but, you know. I don't know that it's, it's gonna benefit us all that much right now, cause I think it would be so helpful to know. What the revenue side is, or be close to knowing something, that we can use that, that information to guide us through our expense side of the budget.
I have two questions with that, so first off. The, let's just, let's just use. the let's just let's just use the the never mind excise tax and all those other things, main revenue sharing, we usually get about three hundred thousand, which is a mill, right? So if we're not going to address our budget. The plan, from what I'm understanding from reading all of these things we're getting, is that we're going to stick with the current budget into the new year, right? Is that correct?
Uh, no, not necessarily.
We're not gonna make any cuts and we're just gonna keep running the way we're running.
So what I, that's not what we're saying at all. So let me, let me back up a little bit. So the governor's first executive order of March twenty four, okay? Gave the towns the ability to end the schools, the ability to adopt last year's budget and commit taxes. Okay, I don't think that's a good option, because that doesn't give us the opportunity to make adjustments to our expense side of the budget. And so we know that the revenue picture is going to be different and adopting last year's budget with less revenue is is going to mean a mill rate increase. No, no ifs, ands or buts. So that's which is why, you know, it would be helpful to have some revenue projections from the state of Maine. To help us make informed decisions as to what we need to do here to mitigate to mitigate a mill rate increase upon the taxpayers.
Okay, but I guess I'm not understanding then, if if we're not, let's say we're not gonna have any budget meetings, we're not gonna, you know, worry about cutting right now, we're gonna wait. And then we hit July first. What budget are we running on?
So we we operate under the governor's rule, we're allowed to operate on last year's budget month by month. Until we can, until we have, until we adopt our budget.
Right, so back to my question, if we operate on last year's budget for July, August thirty one. Then we go to town meeting in September, budget doesn't get passed, we're three months in. And we're still on last year's budget and we do not get main revenue sharing, it's a one mill increase. Cause we've made no cuts. And I'm not telling you we have to make cuts, I just want to make sure I understand. If if we're doing nothing. We, either way, we're we're still running a risk of giving people an increase, because um county tax went up. So we have to pay that increase, we have no choice but to pay it. You know, I I I understand that it's not maybe a good idea to start looking at things and say, oh my God, we need to eliminate a department. But I also think going into the new year, um we should at least try to walk back. You know, the slight increase we were seeing in this new proposed budget, like somehow we have to mitigate the the raise in the county tax and the other things that you know, we already had an increase.
So you basically have two things going on here, you have the ability to not be able to pass a budget for a while still uh at town meeting. So we're operating on last year's budget and so the there's two things that we have to do, you know, our budget, our budget year ends June thirty. Okay, so we're still operating in this year's, but we're not gonna operate on the past year's budget, which is the one that we're in right now until July one, okay? Uh, so conceivably, we would have basically one month or two of operations under last year's budget until the new uh until we can get to to a point where we can adopt the town's budget. A lot of unknowns. Uh, the only thing that we can do, Laurie, until the new budget is adopted, whenever that is. If we're into the new fiscal year after July one, is mitigate, you know, spending to bear bare ness- bare necessities. Uh, to keep our expenses as low as possible. Because at the end of it all, I mean, it's 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 what it is that for twelve months of operations is what's budgeted for. So, you know, if our budgets, if 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 running on this year's budget would be more than what we would normally or what we would budget in next year's budget. Those are expenses that we would have to kind of, we would have to curtail our spending as much as we can so that we fall within our budget for the twelve month period.
Sorry, Dave, I'm just saying, I think we need to look at being at less than our budget, because if we, this year's budget. This year's budget ran the way it ran and went up three mills even with the revenue sharing. And there's a very good chance that we don't get, you know, I'm not gonna say not any, but it's very unlikely we're gonna get the same amount, so I I just don't know where we're supposed to find that money if we don't start looking ahead at where we can cut. I don't wanna be in September and say, oh my God, you know, we're short five hundred thousand dollars now, like how do we go backwards again? So I don't know if I'm not understanding this whole process, but it just doesn't sound right to me.
And that's why I think it makes sense for us to start having at least preliminary budgets that we can go on, we can also project our revenue sharing, let's say we work on the number that's uh forty percent less than last year and work with that, and if it changes for the better, then we could always add it back into our budget. But if we have no idea where we're going all the way to September, well, again, uh, uh, how are you going to spend, what's your budget for July? Is it going to be your total budget divided by twelve? Or is it going to be your last year's budget in July minus ten percent, let's say?
Typically, it's your budget, your annual budget divided by twelve.
Well, your spending in July and August is minimal compared to your winter months. So you're not gonna use all that money in July and August. So what you probably should do is use your last year's expenses in July, reduce it by ten percent. And we and take your money you spent last August and reduce it by ten percent. Because you're you're not spending equal amounts every month there. Your budget's not divided by twelve equally uh through the year.
I I guess I I'm I'm following what you're saying. What I what what I'm saying is that the discussion that needs to be had is that in order to mitigate uh some severe reductions in revenue, the discussions that we're gonna have are gonna be pretty significant and so.
Well, starting May first, starting May first, when we can meet in person, we need to, we need to uh to attack those uh budgets.
June first, you mean?
Uh, June first, yes. Yeah, when we start meeting together, June first, we need to start putting some numbers together a little bit. We need to make some assumptions. And hopefully your revenue carrying number will come in by that time, I don't know.
I have to get some assumptions we can make that are somewhere in the middle of doing nothing and the sky is falling. And, you know, at least we're halfway where we need to be if the sky does fall.
Yeah.
We're 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 definitely uh between a rock and a hard place here and and there's no question that this revenue sharing issue is 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 major and, you know, where we were looking on the plus side and maybe being able to live with with the budget that we've had. I don't see that happening and I don't see how we're not gonna increase the mill rate either. With the with the revenue sharing dropping as it is, I just I'm having a hard time to see that we're not going to raise the mill rate again.
And that's and that's why we need to start talking now, rather than wait until the end of August.
I wasn't proposing that we wait till the end of August, I'm just saying that I I think that it would be nice to be able to get some figures, so a little bit something more than what we're getting right now. As opposed to where we're going on the revenue side, that would at least give us some confidence in in our decision making. Cause our decision basically is going to be consequential, you know.
But you know, Gary, you have absolutely no idea right now when you're gonna get word from the state as far as revenue sharing.
So typically the schedule for when they start, they put out three projections, the for- the revenue forecasting committee starts to meet in February, they give their first projection, uh and then they meet again and then usually in July. They give us their final and that coincides with the legislature and and the education funding as well. Uh, the school gets their numbers and we get ours and that's what we plug in. Uh, and so, yeah, we always, we've always adopted our town budget without the full revenue sharing picture, but but a pretty good idea where it's gonna lie, we by the second by the second projection, they're pretty much on point. Uh, and the third one kind of finalizes it, uh the one that comes in in July, if you will, and sometimes it's late July. Uh, but you're close, you know, um. This year's different, we don't know. They put out a projection in in February before COVID hit. And it looked really good that we were gonna get two hundred seventy seven thousand dollars more, which would have been which was great, I mean, that would have been awesome, uh. But, you know, we've already been told that not to use that. Uh, because it's going to change and, you know, we haven't gotten any updates uh on that as well.
They're getting no sales tax or lodging tax, well, no, but I mean, the losses of sales tax and lodging tax alone going into the state, cause the summer's gonna be shut down, is gonna be, you know, crazy.
Devastating, devastating.
Yeah, the other thing.
No, no restaurant, no restaurant tax, that's eight percent right there.
You know, what could potentially save us is any federal stimulus funds and there's been a, there's a lot of effort underway with MMA and and their town managers to uh let our delegation know that they're gonna have to, the feds are gonna have to step up, stabilize states and municipalities and cities, because it's gonna be very, very tough. And so that, you know, we would hope to see something come out from uh some sort of stimulus package, um that's to be determined, that would help.
We can print.
We've sent letters to our delegations and we're doing our part. Uh, and we're keeping up, we're keeping uh ourselves a prize with MMA and they're keeping a surprise of anything, any discussions they're having with delegation and and the governor's office. And they're doing a good job at that, but at this point in time, we have to wait and see, we have it included state stimulus funding or municipality, uh stimulus funding in the three bills that they put forward so far. Uh, we're hoping that this next one, they're gonna consider uh states and municipalities.
They're just starting to consider states and municipalities, it's just starting to be, starting to be discussed on this round.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think I think the points are being made correctly, uh that we should uh probably convene budget talks as soon as we can in June, start talking about scenarios, start planning. I think that would be a wise thing to do. And to see, uh, you know, anything else that comes above and beyond what we might expect i- is good. I don't think we need to to look at maybe necessary, Laurie said, maybe not the, you know, the worst case scenario, but something in, you know, that we have kind of a plan that says, listen, we're we're going to town meeting, uh let's say in October. Uh, and uh if we wait till then to get revenue things, it's gonna be tough. We need to have that information maybe prior and work on that. So I guess the 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 concept of starting to work in June on our budgets with the budget committee, uh the finance committee and and develop a try to develop a a budget that takes into account everything that's happening. And that might mean, hate to use the word cuts, but you know, maybe, you know, budget reductions. It's a better word and uh we can go from there. So I think, hearing my consensus that we should start a, as soon as we can in June, uh budget talks again.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
I think you need, we need to, and I'm not saying I wanna go out and say, okay, like, you know, what would happen if we eliminate this department and eliminate that and do this and I I understand, we also have to be really careful about that, because I don't want you know, employees or or people that get certain services, or if we say we're cutting all of social services, I I don't want people to be sitting there all in panic mode thinking, oh my gosh, if this happens, I'm losing my job or I'm losing, you know, the services I usually get through this, you know, certain company or whatever, but um we've got to at least have a little bit of a plan. You know, without, I guess, going into panic mode.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, elections.
So elections, um waiting on a guidance from the governor's office still. Primaries are gonna be July fourteen, we're still waiting on guidance on how we're gonna roll that out. The compliance of social distancing and crowd size, I think. You know, that's that's a tough one. The with the thought was that we could at least have our local elections at the same time on July fourteen. For our local elections, so that's possible.
So we're still waiting on the governor, the governor's not making any decisions? Is the governor gonna make that by herself or does she need uh the?
I can't speak for the governor, Dave.
Yeah, well, she 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 hasn't given you any inclination when she's gonna make a decision?
Well, they've talked about July fourteen, uh I think that's when that's gonna happen, right?
It's about it.
Primaries, July fourteen.
Yeah, that's already decided.
Well, we can do it by, couldn't we do it by, you know, letter A through F or whatever downstairs at the KC Hall and the other alphabet upstairs or you know, again, use the multipurpose, cause it's so big to keep people separated outside even.
Yeah. And if you can't, if you can't keep your separation, wear a mask. You know, if you can't keep your six foot separation, you can wear a mask while you're voting, whatever. I think you're right, I think the multipurpose is gonna get a lot of use this summer.
Multipurpose has uh options, you know, you have the the doors to go in and you have side doors to go out.
Absolutely.
And you can, you know, put your poles at a certain, at the other end of it, so you have spacing of six feet, you can put probably if you have two or three lines, you could probably put the easy enough, you're fifty. And just limit the line outside, we see it every day on TV, how that works, how people are outside waiting to go vote, you know?
Yeah.
We need to explore that to see, I I think the multipurpose makes a lot of sense, big enough.
All of the yellow brick road.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Well, that covers, does that cover article one, Gary?
It does.
It it, there's a lot of thought you put into this and stuff and it's create a lot more possibilities or more thinking and more planning, but at least we have uh something on paper that we're just really looking at, uh I don't know if we're, you want a blessing of the board, you know, maybe by consensus that we we follow some of your recommendations, but there's still information that we need to get out, right? That we need to to make final decisions.
I I think that we have, uh, we we recorded what your comments were, we know what the, we know what the the guidance is. Uh, we have a few uh areas that are yet to be determined, but just a couple, so we're good.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah.
The other questions, guys, on article one, and Laurie, I say guys, I I want to include you on that comment too, sorry. We're good for now?
We're good.
Yeah, all right. Article two, uh to consider the twenty twenty town roads paving project. Let's get into that discussion.
So at our last board meeting, we we decided that, well, not our last one, but uh week before that, yeah. Then we're not gonna make a decision on whether or not we're gonna move to pave right, right just yet, uh that it wasn't gonna hurt us to go out to to bid, see what we get for prices. Uh, and then maybe by by the time that all is all said and done, we'd have a better picture of what's going on with uh with COVID nineteen. And so, you know, don't have a good picture, uh other than we know that revenues are gonna be reduced by the state, um we don't know how much. We know that we're gonna see reductions in excise tax, uh people might not trade your vehicles as much, some of the some of the assumptions being made by the other towns based on the two thousand eight recession is a fifteen percent reduction in what we would budget for uh excise tax. You know, I think that's reasonable. That one's a little easier to determine and revenue share and we don't know. That's just, that's just the number that they're going to tell us. Based on our, based on our revenue forecast. So what we've done is we, we did go out to bid. I'll go through that here or just, let's recap, let's recap the project, if you will. We, at town meeting last year, put forth a project in, in front of the townspeople for a $3 million bond to pave town roads. The townspeople approved it. And so the authority was there to go ahead and move forward with securing the funding and doing the project. Then this happened right this year. So at, two board meetings ago, we met and we had to talk about whether or not we should move forward. And I said, let's just look what the pricing looks like. Maybe we'll know more about the economy by the time a decision needs to be made. We ended up, we did solicit bids. We ended up getting one bid by Northeast Paving, which is formerly lean construction. For the project, which was 3 million, bid price came in at 3,367,735 dollars. And so with that, I went ahead and I contacted the bond bank as to see what they thought the market was going to be for bonds. Again, for those who are not, not aware how the main municipal bond bank works. They issue bonds in the spring, then in the fall, and you have a definite schedule, a timeline for submitting applications. When applications are reviewed and approved and when the loan closing is. In this case, we had, planned to only borrow the money in the new fiscal year because that was going to put our first debt payment off into that other fiscal year. And at the same time that we were going to be retiring another paving loan that we had on the books. And our cash flow projection was that, you know, the amount of money that we were putting forward, that we were going to spend on the bond note or the new payment was going to come from number one, the fact that we, what we retired one debt payment, which is about $117,000 a year. And the balance of that loan payment would have been coming out of the offset from this Public Works paving project account, if you will. And so there was going to be a net neutral transaction as far as the mill rate was concerned. We weren't planning on having to raise the mill rate for this paving project. That's how we, we pitched the project and we, we rolled it forward. That it was put before the previous board. And that's how it was put to the townspeople at the annual town meeting last year. Now, I have correspondents into the bond bank as to what their interest rates were looking like right now. They just finished their spring issue. Interest rates looked really good. I was sort of looking for some sort of indication as to the state of the bond market in the fall. If there were going to be any concerns about whether or not, you know, that program going to be there this fall for us to use. The indication that I got was while they can't guarantee the bond market this fall, the, the assumption is that they are going to have some sort of bond program available for the municipality. So right now, you know, it's tough. We have roads. I'm going to go back to what I said before in, in this previous discussion two meetings ago. We have a lot of roads to take care of. We have 55 miles of paved road, paved lane miles, if you will. It's a lot of road to maintain streets. We inherited Lake Shore Road from the state of Maine. They used to pave that. It's nearly four miles. We have to take care of that now. Our plan last year after it was adopted, we did all, a lot of the prep work for the paving project. We did a lot of the cross cul, cross covert replacements wherever they were needed and patched those back in with paving. We did a lot of ditching to address all of the needs or at least most of the areas of concern that we thought we would have to do before we put money on, on roads or paving. So now here we are, we're dealing with, with this COVID-19 economy. We have a project that's been approved by the townspeople. The need is there. Let me, they'll mistake about it. Doing, pushing this project off a year, it, it's project is not going to go away. Okay? It's going to have to happen next year, the year after that, at the worst. The longer we wait, the more it's going to cost because we don't know. It's the condition of the roads are going to get worse. And the base, the good base that they provide right now in certain areas is not going to be as good as the road gets all cracked up. So as it is true that pushing off the project in this economy right now is probably a wise thing to do, not knowing what revenue is going to be and how, you know, what things are going to be the, the year after next in respect to payments. That is very true. It is also true that this project will not go away. We're going to have to pave roads in some shape or form. A lot of our roads, we fell behind after the 2008 recession. We didn't keep up as much as we should have. But, you know, things were done back then to, to try to hope, you know, hold the mill rate and, and help the taxpayers. And that was good. That was all prudent. But it's, it's all work that's going to need to get done at some point in time. And add, add the fact that now we, we now have Lake Shore Road and additional four miles that we didn't have to do before. It's a, it's something that we can't ignore much longer. As a towns treasurer, I have concern for operations and paying the bills. It's my job to work with you guys to make sure that we make informed decisions and staying solvent and not finding ourselves in a situation where we're not meeting our obligations to the county, to the school, to essential services. And so I'm torn. I really am. I think that this project is going to need to move forward at some point in time soon. But right now I have a lot of concern about the mill rate with the whole revenue picture being the way it is. We're not, and listen, we're not, we're not alone in this. If this makes you feel any better, every town is looking at the situation right now. And we're all scratching our heads wondering when we're going to have more information so we can make informed decisions. But we're looking into an unknown future. And that's concerning.
So your recommendation is to postpone these till next year or table this till, till next year or, or years, years down the road?
My recommendation to you is that you, you have what is essentially a in a project already approved, okay? But you also have a very dire situation with respect to the economy potentially and revenue. And then you also have the reality that the condition of our roads is not going to get any better and the longer wait is going to cost more. And, and that's what you all have to decide. What, what is the prudent thing to do here? I have concern, all of those things concern me. And so as a treasurer, I, I worry about being able to pay the bills. But I also know that as a town manager, there's a lot of people that were hoping that these roads were going to get done this year and that we're going to get a lot of calls from a lot of disappointed people that if this project should not move forward, they're going to have to wait, wait longer. It's not an easy decision. Giving you what I think are all, are basically three arguments, I guess, for this project. And it's up to you as the policymakers, what, what are you going to do in respect to this project that we have upon us?
What rights do the townspeople have now with, with, with concerns about, about them voting this money in last year?
I think the guidance that we got, Doug, is that the townspeople have, the legal guidance that we got is that the townspeople have given you the authority to move forward with the project. That's, that's all I have. Right now.
No real timeframe. Right? We have, we have guidance, but we don't have a timeframe. So, so technically we're covered. We don't need to, I mean, we can, we can postpone this if we choose to.
I mean.
Article, article 18, Doug, at the town meeting. Said project would commence in 2019 with road preparation, including but not limited to covert replacement, ditching, road base improvements as needed with final paving to take place in 2020.
So how, 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 how? So, so how do we, how do we, how do we deal with that?
The guidance again is that I think legal guidance is that the board has the authority to move a project forward. Whether or not they decide to, based on what's going on right now, is there, it's up to you guys. We do have a timeline. I do want to point out one thing is that, you know, the work that we did last year for the preparatory work came out of the road projects reserve account. Was it, it wasn't part of it. It wasn't part of this $3 million bond, if you will. That was all stuff that was budgeted through capital reserves in, in the budget that we are in right now.
I have.
The, the warrant says that we are authorized. So I, if I remember correctly, the guidance was, we are authorized by the taxpayer. We are not obligated. And I, I want to say that's obligated was the.
Yeah.
I think you're right, Laurie.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not very comfortable with, first of all, with the wording of the article. I remember some articles similar to this in the past. And the wording had to include what the payments were going to be and what, how it would affect your mill rate. And that's not included in that article. Now I can stand in front of a crowd here and say, let's all have new roads and everybody's going to raise their hands. But the next question is who's going to pay for it? And nobody's going to raise their hands. So this article to me is a little deficient in that it never brought out the idea that this could raise your taxes by a significant amount. I realize that we have a loan that's maturing in two years, but that's two years from now. So you can't use that payment until it's matured. And to raid the account for a hot topping at the Public Works for 15 years will put us in another bind because the other half of our roads still need to be maintained. And having traveled these roads in the last week or two myself personally, I find a lot of deficiencies that need to be fixed before we put any hot top down. I don't think that we're done getting ready to put $3 million of hot top down on these roads. Because we're going to be wasting a lot of money. I think we need to take a closer look at this project. And this summer, use this summer to again, work on the base, upgrade some places. There's a, Lovatsi Road has a, a, two dips in there that I lost the front end of my car. There's no, you, there's no need for that. All you need is an hour's work with some hot top and patch it up. It's, it's, it's a hole. And we have a couple of culverts that are coming, that are too high. Those need to be fixed. And if we need to do some shimming this summer by Public Works, then maybe we should. I think we could do it for a lot cheaper than hiring somebody. And I'm only talking about shimmy. I traveled up and down Dufour Road. And there's hot top everywhere, but there's a lot of collapsed shoulders. You're going to need a load of hot top just to shim that. Is that the proper way to do it? Are we wasting a lot of hot top or should we do something different? There's, there's a lot of questions that I have in my mind right now. I'm not comfortable moving with this project, not this summer.
Dave, can, can you explain to me what, what does shimmy mean?
Shimmy means that you have a piece of road that has a big collapsed area, maybe the size of a car. That's probably eight inches lower than the rest of it. And you got to dump a whole lot of hot top in there just to bring it up to the right height. To make it now, now you can come back with a small shim and go over it, a small.
So basically exactly, exactly what the words mean. You're, you're shimmying, you're leveling off with the rest of the, the road pavement.
Yeah, you're shimmying with hot top.
Yeah, but I mean, you're, you're making it level with the rest of the road pavement.
Yes, exactly, exactly. And Dufour Road has a lot of that. Those ups and downs, ups and downs. It's a lot of, there's hot top everywhere. There's a couple of spots that need to be fixed, like holes in this and that or a culvert. But the rest of it is all up and down, up and down, up and down. And I noticed with an F250 Ford pickup that 35 miles an hour is about the top speed that you want to go on that road. So just to give you an idea. I say we wait, I say we wait another year. I think we need to address some of these problems a little bit more. And this financial crisis that we're in hopefully will be behind us and we'll be able to see a little clearer next year. And we still have $350,000 in our Public Works account as we speak for this summer. So we can take care of the worst areas that need to be fixed. We can do some shimmying. I think we can make a lot of people happy with what we can do with that amount of money.
Dave, I gotta, I don't have the number in front of me here. I don't have my financials, but we don't, I don't think we have that much. We, we, we draw down, down our reserve with the projects that we put forth last year. So I'm going to have to get back to you on the number for what we have in our reserves. But I don't think 350 is the number that we have in reserves right now.
What, what do you mean? What do you mean reserves? That's our running budget every year for hot top.
I'd have to go back and check to see what's, what's left in there.
Yeah.
We, we are, we are at the end of our.
But I'm talking about in the new budget year, starting July 1st, you still have, again, the same amount.
Just, just keep in mind, Dave, that, that as we work on our next budget, the areas that are first, are likely first going to get hit are the capital reserves, capital projects, capital outlays. Because that's where a lot, you know, there's a lot of expense there in one spot. And oftentimes during financial crises, that's where towns go first.
Well, I understand, I understand it's very tempting to go into the hot top account because it doesn't affect labor. It doesn't affect too much and, and that's how we are falling behind. We've fallen behind because that was the account, the go-to account to raid. And nobody really said too much, but how, how long can we raid the hot top account? And not come to a place where nothing works anymore, you know?
I just want to be clear, Dave. I don't think that how the hot top account has ever been raided. The hot top account has been used to put, to purchase hot top. The reason why we're behind is because we didn't, we didn't do enough over the last decade and we inherited more roads to take care of. And so I just want to make sure that the public understands that.
Yes, we did inherit the Lake Shore Road. We did inherit that about five years ago. And yes, we, last year, I think was the first time we put some money into it. We put some culverts into it and we fixed some ditching and that kind of thing. And I don't know if we're really done. I mean, before we start putting $3 million of hot top down. There's a lot of roads that need to be looked at more seriously before we put down $3 million of hot top.
Okay, well, we, we know where Dave is going. Any other comments from anyone else? Doug, do you have anything to add?
Well, I guess really, I, I kind of agree with Dave, except that I don't know if we can address any of these in, in stages. I mean, I look at the list that we have in front of us here and, and I, I wouldn't have any idea if we, if we were going to attempt to divide this, how we would divide this, but does all of this work need to be done or do we have to go to the bond bank and, and, and chase $3 million? Or can it be a lower amount? Or I guess the question is, excuse me, can we attack this in stages?
Here's where, you know, we've gotten so far behind that, and I get it, I get what Dave was saying about having debt service. That, and I get it, I get what Dave was saying about having debt service and still having roads to maintain and, and having reduced paving budget. In, in respect, in future budgets moving forward. Um, but we find ourselves in a position that we don't have much choice, but we're, the, the likelihood is that we're going to have to borrow. A significant amount of money to get caught up. Otherwise you have to raise that money in taxes. All at once, or you know, in, in stages. So. Three hundred forty thousand, three hundred thirty thousand dollars of spending is equivalent to one mill. So, you know, for every million dollars worth of paving, it's, it's equivalent of three mils. And so how do you want to pay for the project? And so that gets you caught up. Right? And so it's why falling behind on, on, on roads like that is, is, it's tough. Because once you decide that you have to, you hit that wall. You know, then you're hitting the wall and you're making some big, some big decisions.
And that's exact, exactly, that's exactly my point, Gary. If we do the hot top now. There is no way that hot top's gonna last fifteen years, which is the life of the loan, fifteen years.
That's right.
At the very most right now, half of those roads are not ready for hot top. And they will be back to a, a lot like they're looking now in three, four and five years. I can guarantee you that by what I've seen. They have to be prepped a lot better than they are now.
And listen, I'm not going to disagree with you at all. But it's going to add a lot more cost to the projects as well, to the, to the road repair effort.
I think, I think the town can do a lot of that work themselves. We can do a lot of that shimmying and we can do a lot of that rebasing. Uh, if you gotta do ten feet of rebasing in one area. Rather than just skimcoat it with an inch and a half of hot top and hope it holds for, for what? People are going to forget three or four years on the road, you're back to the same place.
I think I'm gonna have a discussion with Kevin and, uh, just see, uh, how. Uh, when, what they can do there that, that might help this situation along, but I tend to agree with you, Dave.
Lori.
I know absolutely nothing about shimmying and tar and fixing roads. I did drive several of these myself. They're bad. Um, I can see how if I lived on one of these roads, I'd be really upset. But I cannot in good conscience at this time, agree to borrow any money. Like I just do not, I don't see it. We have no idea where our budget's gonna land and. What kind of money we're getting from the state and, um. We're already at risk of raising the mill rate, um, if the state doesn't pull through so, or we don't, you know, we can't find cuts that, that people can live with. I, I would not vote to take, to take out a loan. You know, just whether I know about the project or not, it, it doesn't make sense to me.
I have another concern, a big concern. Uh, we have, uh, four companies in Northern Maine that do hot topping. And we received one bid. I want to know why. Uh, I want to know why these other three companies are refusing work or are they? I want to know the, the long and the short of it. I'm not comfortable with one bid. I'm sorry.
Well, we did advertise it, Dave, you know, and so I don't know, I can't speak for the companies as to why they didn't, they chose not to submit. All I can tell you is that we did advertise the bid. We did.
How did you advertise it, Garrett?
Local weekly paper that we do every single year.
How, how did you advertise it, Garrett?
Local weekly paper, St. John, uh, Philalet Focus.
There's only four companies. Why not send a letter to four companies?
And we could.
Save yourself some money. Don't have to advertise it. Send it out. There's only four companies that do it in Northern Maine. Send out the bid requirements, send out the specs, just give it to them and say, we need a, a price by X amount of days. And if they, they need to respond in writing if they're not interested or they need to respond one way or the other.
Why are you saying now that you want to go out to bid again?
No, 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 no. But I mean, i- if we'd gone ahead, I'm not, I'm not happy with one bid. And why did the other three bid, three other guys didn't, uh, solicit a bid?
I'm not sure where you're getting that fourth one here, Dave.
Just, just take it the way it is. Um, I mean, there's something wrong somewheres. When the company doesn't even put a bid in for a job, a three million dollar job. I mean, there's something smelling. I just don't like the smell. So I think we're all in the same agreement here that, uh, we need to postpone this for at least a year. And hopefully maybe prep our roads a little better. And the budget that we already have in our hot top account, I think we can, we can do a lot with it this summer to, to make people. Happy enough to, uh, to, to wait a little bit.
Yeah, you know, there, there, there's a couple of things, Dave. Uh, first of all. It's the same bid process that we've been using for years. And, uh, we, we've had multiple bidders in the past submit bids. So I don't know what the deficiency is of why, ma- maybe it's simple as that, maybe writing a letter to the, I believe only three. Companies in the, in, in the area here that would probably provide a bid to us. Maybe that would have been an option to do, but we've been following what we've been doing in the past. The other thing, the other thing is that, uh. I believe we're gonna have to, uh, when we have our next town meeting. Which will happen in two thousand and twenty at some point. Uh, we're gonna have to go back to our voters. And, and explain to them that we have not done the project because of these traditions. And, and if they adamantly say, no, you're going to do a, a hot top project, you know, that, that's where. They're the deciding vote, right? But they have to be explained what the financial impact could be. But, uh, I don't know. Uh, I personally, uh, you know, what was it? Couple meetings ago, whatever, kind of suggested that it may not be the proper time to go out and borrow money. Um, and I still maybe think it's still not the proper time to go out and borrow money. With the, everything being so uncertain. Uh, they're talking a lot about stimulus money for infrastructure and stuff. Maybe there's some of that will trickle down to the local communities here, you know. Uh, maybe in the Matawaska at some point that could be used for infrastructure. Uh, I'm assuming, uh, road, uh, reconstruction, building, bringing up the snow, hot topping could be part of a. Uh, program like that if that ever occurs.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not saying, uh, I, I, I think, I think it's a good, probably in my mind. I'd hate to go out and borrow money and not know what the impact is going to be. And what those revenues are going to look like down the road. Cause it is a fifteen-year borrowing. And I hate to see us, uh, get caught in a, it's twenty-two that comes back to harm us.
I think that's, uh, well said, Dawn. I think you're right. And I think we should, uh, hold on to that, uh, that thought and move forward with that.
Doug, you still want to talk to Kevin, which is fantastic. You know, there's nothing wrong with that. You know, I know he's been planning and working very hard, you know, and looked at, and he's looking at all these possibilities and stuff, but. It wouldn't hurt to maybe have the full board, uh, have a sit down with him at one point and to discuss it again with Gary and Kevin and the full board. So.
That might be, that might be, but for sure, you know, I need to, I need to be a little bit more informed about. How to maintain roads, how to take care of roads and how to get, how to prep a road for, for hot topping. Uh, you know, Dave's bringing up issues tonight that. That, that I'm not familiar with, so I, I just want to learn on my own what. What really needs to be done to get it prepped and ready to go to, to hot top.
Yeah, that's fine. So what am I hearing? Uh, we, uh. Rejecting the bid at this point because, uh. Uh, we're not able to afford it right now or not sure we can afford it? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, I think we need to table this and, and not move forward until, and, and you never know, like you said. Stimulus money might come and in, in the, now they might vote in something in Congress and we say, wow, you know, there's our money to do this. I'd love to see it done, but when it was presented to the taxpayer too, it was, it was explained to not increase. Um, the mill rate and that would have worked had everything stayed, you know, the way it was, when nobody could have planned for this, uh. You know, COVID seventeen and.
And I think that's important that you mentioned that, Lori, because when we, when we, we. We talked about this project and how we were going to cash flow it and pay for it so that it did not have an effect on the mill rate. It's exactly what the plan was. But now, you know, we're, we're facing something that's causing a severe hit to our revenues. That's going to cause, you know, potentially cause something to the mill, you know, for the mill rate to go up. And so that wasn't there last year when we talked about that. The situation just wasn't there. Nobody could have ever thought. We would find ourselves in this situation, but it's unfortunate.
Yeah.
So what's the motion need?
Say that again, Lori. I missed that.
But what does the motion need to be that we're just tabling the? Projects?
Tabling it. Keep in mind that tabling it, uh, the, the bids that we did receive right now are going to be good for what? Thirty days, give or take?
Yeah.
Not much more. So if we table it for more than thirty days, then, and we decide we want to go through with the whole project. Or part of the project, we're gonna have to re-bid again at some point.
Quite, quite frankly, if we, I think, you know. Things have changed so much that I think, you know, putting this back, when we decide to go back, reconsider this project. That we go back to the voters and, and let them make a decision as to whether or not. This in what shape or form, maybe we can give them the different options. But you know, the, the paradigm has shifted and everything is much different now. So I think the prudent thing to do in the future, whenever that is. Whether we revisit it even this year at town meeting for a project next year. Who knows, you know? Um, maybe that's a possibility. I don't know. I'm just saying that at some point in time, we will have to revisit this, this project. And it's, and it's, it's a year or two away. Uh, I don't see it going out much further than that without the roads getting really, really bad. Some places are.
So do you think at this point it'd be prudent for us to make a motion to, uh, table this until? Whenever? Or?
I don't know how we take, I don't know how you table this. I mean, either we say we're not going, we're not going ahead with the project. And we're gonna re, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna go back to the townspeople with it or?
I, I think that your motion needs to be clear so that there's no ambiguity. There's no, people are reading this differently. I, I really, you know, if I was to recommend something that you guys make a definitive motion that, that. Spells it out so that everybody understands it the same way.
Okay. I think the motion should be to delay this project until next year. Unless something else materializes like a, like, uh, some kind of a government program that they're trying to throw money at us or whatever. But this, this project should be delayed till next year. At the very least.
So you're saying delaying it? Just delaying it?
Delaying it until next year.
Yeah. Well, I think.
Until further ado, until we, 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 we sit back and, and reevaluate. How the, this loan's gonna get, uh, put together, where the money's gonna come from. Maybe new programs are gonna be coming out. Maybe all these will come together. Uh, over the course of next, uh, fall and winter. Who knows?
I, I just, you know, I just think that. Whenever the project is reconsidered and I should go back before the voters one more time.
Yep, I do too.
And so your, your, your motion should say something to that effect that, you know, we're gonna, once we get a better understanding of what the, what the. Economy is and the financial picture for the town. Uh, we have some sort of degree of certainty of whatever it is, you know, whatever the number is for revenue, you know? That then we could consider putting it forward for the townspeople to decide once again. Because everything's changed.
Town meeting after September first.
In the meantime, um. I don't remember who asked the question, but is there a way? I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how you would do, but is there a way to prioritize this list that come town meeting? We said, okay, we can borrow a million dollars and these are the roads that we can actually do. I mean.
If, if we're gonna.
From now to then?
If we're gonna go to the main bond bank, our application has to be in by, I believe, August first. Yeah. So in essence, by delaying the, depending for town meeting. That means that the earliest we could borrow again from Mainuswell Bond Bank would be in the spring.
Right, so. There's no, there's no reason.
I'm sorry, Clay, Dave.
If you want to include it as an article in the next town meeting. As long as we've got, we're wording it so that we're saying what you just said a while ago. You know, we're looking at the, uh, financial climate, the, 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 this epidemic that we've gone through. The, all these things are factoring in. Uh, we've decided to postpone it till next year. And somehow or another make an article out of that so that people are. Are either in agreement with it or not. If they're not in agreement with it, we're too late to do anything that, that, that year anyways. I, I, I don't know how an article will, will. Will work.
Well, you don't, you don't necessarily have to wait to your annual town meeting to approve this project. You can go to special town meeting, right? And so the only thing that you have to plan for is in your regular annual town meeting budget is your debt payment. If you were gonna incur debt payment for that project that's not just.
Yeah, I don't see us going through a special town meeting when, uh, ten people are gonna show up in the middle of the summer. And make a decision for four thousand people again, you know? This, this is too much of a, a big project to be decided by five, ten people.
Yeah. Interesting point.
Alright, so, uh. Dave, your motion to sum up what I think I heard is that, uh, you made a motion that would delay, uh, moving forward with this project. And, uh.
Two thousand twenty-one.
Two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Okay, I heard.
So that means that we're not putting, we're not putting forth another article then?
No.
We're just delaying this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Our, our article can be different.
If, if we're, if we're not changing the article, which we're not today, we're only postponing it.
But Doug, I, I, I don't think we can change any article that's gone.
That's what I'm thinking. So it has to go in the way it is. It's not gonna change.
Yeah.
If we're gonna, if you're gonna cancel the project and, and bring up a separate article with a different amount, then that would be a different story, but. Here we're just postponing it.
Yeah, we're postponing, but with, with the thought process that when we go to town meeting again, we have a discussion. At town meeting, explaining to them why we did not move forward with this hot top project in two thousand twenty.
I think that's a good idea, Dawn. I think, I think it should be explained to the people, but it shouldn't be part of an article. They do need, they do, they do need to know. To have an explanation why we didn't move ahead on this particular article. And have a, a good discussion or an in-depth explanation why we didn't go, move ahead. And I think, uh, reasonable people will understand that, uh, we had good reason to postpone it.
Yeah, and by doing that, we are gonna have a town meeting in two thousand twenty and the project says to be completed in two thousand twenty. So we're still in the same timeline and to be able to bring it back to them. And to discuss and to show the, discuss the reasons why, uh, we've decided to delay this project or suggesting delaying this project for two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. So that's my motion, delay it until two thousand twenty-one. So that's my motion, delay it until 2021. To reevaluate in 2021. And hopefully we can, uh, make this project work.
Doug, are you comfortable?
Yeah, yeah, I think Lori seconded that, so I think we're, uh. We're ready for a vote, huh?
Yeah, well, we are, I think we are. Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we've, uh, delayed this project, so that means Gary, you'll have to. Write, uh, Northern Paving a letter or at least make contact with them saying that. Because of the economic times and the situations, uh, that we're all experiencing across this country that. It doesn't seem to be in the best interest of our community right now to go out and do another borrowing. Until more information or. Better understanding of where we're going as, you know, financially. As a community and as a county and as a state. Okay?
Okay.
We have, uh. Are we, my understanding, Gary, that. Uh, as of May 1st, or is it June 1st? That we can have, uh, board meetings live or bodies can be as long as we keep, uh, the, the, the group of 10 people or less?
50 after June 1st.
After June 1st, okay. Is there a need to have another meeting in May? We must have some business that needs to be addressed?
Yeah, I would say that we probably would have some business to do, uh, in May.
And that could be held, uh, at the chamber, at the, at the, uh, our chambers. And, uh, as long as we adhere to. Uh, we're six right here. Uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, plus the camera, 6. Uh, Natalie, 7. Uh, so we have to stay under 10.
Sorry. Gary, I should have waited.
No, I mean. Are you proposing that we have in, in-person board, board meeting the next one or zooming the next one?
Well, it would have to be, you know, depending what you guys want to do. Uh, we can. We can, uh, if you want to space us in the, uh, council chambers. Uh, it would still have to be, uh, zoomed to the public.
Yeah.
But we, you know. I'm just throwing that out.
We could do it in the council chambers, Don, or we could do it upstairs in the meeting room. Where it's a lot more roomier. Don't you think?
Yeah, it's true. You mean you're talking about the, uh, school department up there?
Yeah.
Potentially, yeah.
Gary, uh, what do we, uh?
We could have a group of 10, 10 or less. So if we have seven working people. If, uh, three more people wants to come in, well, they are allowed in.
Well, the only thing is, who, who are you gonna shut the door to once you hit 10?
Well, once you get 10, you shut the door.
True, that's true too. Yeah. Because I was, uh, I'm, I'm contemplating, because I was hearing what we were talking about, about a while ago, and I. I'm contemplating my particular condition as, uh, you know, uh. As a possibility that I would call in versus. Uh, would still be a Zoom thing, but if you guys wanted to sit around the table, that's up to your, 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 your individual choices. Maybe we ought to wait till. June before we convene, uh. Uh, in an area where we can put 50 people. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out. After June, I'm done, so, uh, we'll have.
Gary, uh. Do we have anything pressing here that we, uh, that we, uh, need to meet here or the next?
I got some, I got some abatements that need to be, you know, processed before the board. Some minor abatement requests, so.
Did you get a, did you get a letter from Marx here on his, uh, proposal? That the board needs to look at?
For.
For a piece of, uh, Canaan Street being needed over to some people and.
I only, the only thing I got, Dave, so far is, is what, uh, you provided me for, for imagery.
Yeah.
I don't, unless it's in the mail, we do quarantine our mail for 72 hours.
Do you need, do you need a more, do you need something more formal to move ahead?
So in, in respect to selling town property, we have to go to town meeting to do that.
Town meeting.
The board doesn't have the authority unless, unless it was explicit. Granted to the board. At the previous town meeting.
It wasn't.
And it wasn't. The only authority that the board has to, to dispose of property in respect to real estate. Lies with what we acquire through tax or sewer leads. And we have a guidance on that, that the board, that townspeople approve every year.
Okay, so at least, at least we can tell, uh, the. The client that he'll have to wait until after a town meeting then. If that's the case.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, the board would have to decide what the terms of the sale would be, okay?
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to, to, to nail down at this point.
Right.
Do we want to move ahead with this? Do we want to put a price on it? Or how, how are we gonna handle this?
Well, typically, typically.
Well, first of all, Dave, first of all, Dave, you're talking about. Something that you're knowledgeable about that I think the rest of us are not.
Right.
To discuss it today, uh.
I don't want to just, I just want to bring it on the next board meeting, so we can talk about it.
Okay. Alright, got it.
Even though it's just preliminary talk, so whatever, we might not be able to make a decision, but at least we'll have put it on the agenda.
Okay.
And we'll, uh, have a discussion about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Doug, I, I, I see probably. An agenda of a dozen to 15 articles, some of them pretty, pretty straightforward. But still having to, having to have them sooner than later.
Well, we should have a meeting then before, before June 1st.
And then also. Yeah, and then of, of course, we go back to the rec department with the programs and what, what are we gonna do there? That's a decision that we have to revisit before June 1st.
Good.
May 18 or 19, is that too fast?
I think May 18 is, uh, is good.
Is that a Monday?
Yeah.
May 18 is a Monday.
Okay, May 18 is good for me.
For the next agenda, um. Don, you just made me realize something. You're done in June. At the time, we were all saying, oh, it'll be at the time of the election. Um, does that mean on our, we should. Revisit or we should discuss? Do we really want to wait until June 14 for board elections? Are we okay to go? For the month with the three people? How does that work?
Well, June, June 14 is not gonna happen, Lori.
July.
July, yeah, yeah, July, okay, yeah. Uh, if, if I finish at the end of June.
Okay.
Uh, then you'd have a couple of weeks, you'd have to operate as a three, uh, member board. Before the next election. And, and. I believe I had said, you know, my resignation would have been effective at the, following the elections in June, but that's not gonna happen, so, but. July, uh, June 30th is my drop dead. Uh, I can say it till then.
Don't, don't say drop dead, Don.
No, I shouldn't. That's not a good word to use in my, at this time. Yeah. Got it. So we're looking at, uh, Laura, are you okay on the 18th of, uh, May? For a board meeting?
Yeah, yes.
What time?
Yes.
Will have to be, uh, uh, 5:30? Is that a good time, 5:30?
5:30 works for me.
And, uh. Are we gonna do the Zoom again? Or are we gonna? Because I may, you know, I may not want to be in a group setting there because of my, uh. Immune system.
Well, let's do one last Zoom. How's that?
You know, yeah, and, and, and to be only open to two or three people to come in to a meeting. You're just gonna, you're just gonna upset people. You're just gonna piss them off, saying, turning away at the door. I mean. You know, let, let's just stick with a Zoom for, for, for the maybe, then. Then go from there.
Okay, I, I'm good with that.
Well, are we, are we trying to be narrow as we discussed right in the beginning of this? If we can have public participation electronically?
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's, let's not forget about that.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep. Yep.
You got that, Gary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, text or email. So, so Gary, we would have somebody to be able to receive those, those messages?
We can have Natalie, we can have Natalie monitor while she's taking notes and she could read us. What the questions are and, uh. That's it. I mean, we're not gonna be able to take 100 questions, but we can reserve. Like we usually do at a normal meetings, 10 minutes of public participation.
Yep. Okay.
We can't.
We all said.
We can't entertain, um. We can't entertain allowing. Uh, a compromise between letting everyone in on Zoom or just people who have, wanna, wanna comment. Because usually, you know, there's three, four people that actually know that they're coming to the meeting because they, they have comments to make. Um, could we entertain maybe saying? If you want to make public comments, then, you know, email Gary and he'll get you. I, I don't know. I, I just.
I, I will post the agenda that way.
And that, we're not changing anything by just saying that they should email us. We're just. Changing who was gonna read the email because they couldn't email Gary and he would have read it to us.
Right.
Well, if you want to do it by email and if you want to do it before the meeting. That's one way to do it, but a lot of people have comments while. Right before the meeting, let's say. And, uh, not everybody's gonna take the time to write an email or whatever, but. If you do have a live, I think you call it a podcast, a live podcast where you can make comments. While this podcast is going on. Then you can, uh, either write those, uh, questions down and maybe attack, uh, five questions, 10 questions. You know, do 10 minutes of questions.
Gary.
I don't, I don't know the possibilities of that.
I, I'll talk to Jason Boucher and.
Yeah, it's done, it's done all the time. We're.
Well, I.
We're attending church services all over, all over the United States here and have comments going up all the time. It's.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's just, uh. A little program. I'm sure that Jason Boucher knows how to do it.
I'm sure too, but I'd just like to see what they're doing on the school board meeting. In a couple nights where I read that if anyone wants to participate, they gave them an address. That means in my mind that that particular, you, you, it's like you're part of that meeting and for 10 minutes. You can speak, you know, uh.
I'm sure we can come up with something in two weeks.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Dave, signal by Doug, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Yep, have a good evening.